System to be up and moving. Are we up and moving yet? Okay. Everybody ready? All right. Can you, you know, I think you can sign up. Good evening, everyone. I'm calling tonight's meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, February 12th, 2019. It is 7:01 PM, and we are assembled here tonight at the City of Oxford Board of Commissioners's regular monthly meeting, and I welcome you all and hope you are well. And with that, I would like to remind anybody to turn off or mute your electronic devices, and I will read our mission statement, which is that the City of Oxford is here to serve and improve our community by providing high-quality, affordable services, sound planning for growth and development, and by offering the highest possible quality of life while maintaining the public's trust through open communication and ethical standards at all times. At this time, I would like to invite Reverend Jenny Wilson to come forward from the Oxford United Methodist Church to open our meeting in prayer. Thank you, Reverend.
Let us pray. I lift my eyes to the hill. From where does my help come? My help comes from the Lord who made heaven and earth. Loving God, Creator of all that is, we praise you this night as we think about the day you have given each of us. We praise you for each person gathered here, for though all are made in your image, we each have our own passions, our logic, our gifts, our talents. And we pray in this gathering tonight that those passions and logic and talents would manifest themselves in listening that is deep and wide, in words that build up, that do no harm, in lives that are focused on justice and mercy for all persons in this community. We thank you, oh God, for all of your many gifts and for the graciousness that we have of living together here in this place. Lead and guide and enable us to follow so that we bring you honor and glory, not only this night, but at all times. We pray this in your gracious and holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much, Reverend. This time, I would like to invite Commissioner Quantrill just to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
All right, we're all saying? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. At this time, we'll consider any adjustments to an approval of the agenda. There are no adjustments, by knowledge, at our seats. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Curran. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the agenda as is, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries, and the agenda stands approved. In order to provide for the highest standards of behavior and transparency in governance, our Board of Commissioners has approved a code of ethics to establish guidelines for ethical standards for ourselves and to provide guidance in determining appropriate conduct. Among those, that we should avoid impropriety in the exercise of our official duties and should conduct the affairs of the board in an open and public manner. I now inquire whether any board member knows of any conflict of interest or appearance of such with respect to any matters before the board tonight. And if any of you do know of a conflict of interest or appearance of such, please state so at this time.
This sergeant would be asking to be excused from voting or commenting on item number five on the agenda.
Okay. So we have that from Commissioner Woodlock. Any comment? Okay, thank you very much. At this time, then, we will move forward with our delegation section, and we invite a report from Winston Williams Creach Evans and Company on our annual financial report.
See if this is on in a minute. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Carlene Evans, and I'm with the accounting firm of Winston Williams Creach Evans and Company here in town, and we are the city's auditorium, and I'm here to present a summary of our audit report for this past fiscal year. I get it word. First of all, I'd like to start by saying the city received the certificate of excellence in financial reporting for the June 30th, 17 audit report, and I believe this was the 15th straight year for receiving that award. And we have submitted our June 30th, 18 report to the GFOA for grading as well. This current, past year, the city was a yellow book audit, which means there were under $750,000 in federal expenditures. The first two slides I have are from the government-wide statements, which are the first two exhibits in the audit reports. This is comparing last year and this year. You can see the total assets and deferred outflows for this year were $50,164,000. The total liabilities and deferred inflows were $20,87,000, which left us net position at decent, at June 30th, $30,076,000.
It's a deferred outflow.
That's what I was going to get to, that if you can see the total liabilities and deferred inflow, well, outflows are just prepayments on items that we are having to book as liabilities this upcoming year. The reason that total liabilities and deferred inflows have increased so much from last year is we had to do a GASB 75 implementation this year, and it's a government, nationwide thing with all the governments when we have to book the total OPEB liability for every governmental unit that has post-employment benefits. So by booking that total liability, we restated, and that's why the total liabilities and deferred inflows are more this year. And the outflows are just the portions of those payments that you paid in the current year, and then we'll book those as an expense for the upcoming year. Last year, we had to restate because of GASB 73 with lios, so this year it was GASB 75 with total OPEB, so hopefully we won't have any more GASB implementations next year to change our statements. Next exhibit is from still in the government-wide statements. Total revenues this year were $16,125,000. Total expenditures were $12,945,000, which left us an increase in net position of $3,180,000, and that was $313,000 higher than the prior year. And then moving out of the government-wide statements into the fund statements, this is a breakdown of the general fund revenues by type. Adverlon taxes made up 38% of the revenues, and they were a total of $3,543,000. Other taxes were 21% of revenues, which were $1,931,000. Unrestricted revenues were 8%, or $711,000. Restricted revenues were 4%, which were $354,000. We had permits and fees of $45,000, and then the sales and services were 25%, which was $2,346,000. Also, smaller percentages numbers, we had investment earnings of $81,000. We had miscellaneous revenue in the general fund of $27,000. Sale of assets was only 132, so it's not showing in the pie chart. And then transfers in from other funds were $225,000, which left us total revenues for the general fund for the year of $9,268,000. And if we compare those revenues budget to actual, we didn't have any budget amendments for the revenue side for this past year, so the original budget and the final budget for the revenues were $9,376,000. Actual revenues came in at $9,268,000, so the revenues were $108,000 under budget for the year. Then switching to the expenditures, these expenditures are listed by function, and we have general government making up 18% of the expenditures, and they had $1,527,000. Public safety was 43% of the expenditures, or $3,616,000. Transportation was 14%, or $1,166,000. Environmental protection was 12% of the total, for $1,020,000. Culture and recreation was 9%, their total was $767,000. Then we had transfers out to other funds, which was a total of $98,000. We had debt principal payments, which was a total of $281,000, and then debt interest was $7,600, which left us total expenditures in the general fund of $8,487,000. And so if we compare that to budget, our original budget was $9,924,000. The final budget after amendments was $9,970,000, and the actual expenditures were $8,487,000, which were $1,482 under budget. One of the reasons for this is in the budget, we had appropriated fund balance of $593,000, but we didn't actually use any fund balance. We had a surplus of $780,000. So leading to the fund balance for the general fund, we had four categories, non-spendable, restricted, committed, and unassigned. The inventory portion was $5,000. For the restricted portion of fund balance, state statute made up 36% of fund balance, and was $2,34,000. Restriction for streets made up 12%, or $637,000. Then under committed, these other smaller percentages don't show as much on the pie chart either. Federal forfeiture was $17,000. Culture and, cultural and rec was $55,000. And then the largest portion of fund balance at 51% was the unassigned fund balance, which was $2,858,000. So total fund balance for the general fund for the year was $5,608,000. The fund balance that was available for appropriation was $2,936,000. And then if we take the expenditures and the transfers, which were $8,487,000, we get a fund balance as a percentage of expenditures for the year for 34.6%. And then the prior year, this was 32.88, so it's up a tad. And then moving to the proprietary funds, which is water, sewer, and stormwater, we had charges for services for the year of $5,902,000. We had other operating revenue of $937,000, and investment earnings of $76,000. So total revenues for the proprietary funds were $6,915,000. Then on the expenditure side of that by category, we had general expenditures of $811,000, which made up 18%. Had meter services of $110,000, which made up 2%. Water supply was $943,000, or 21%. Line maintenance was $606,000, or 13%. Lift stations were $91,000. The Stovall Water Line was $11,000. Industrial waste treatment was $747,000, which was 17%. Depreciation was 24% at $1,81,000, and then interest was $112,000, so our total expenditures on the proprietary side were $4,516,000. And this just shows the fund balance over the last five years for the two categories of funds. First of all, the governmental funds, you can see at the end of this year, all of the governmental funds combined were $5,505,531, while the proprietary fund balance at the end of the year was $26,021,822. This shows the cash balances for the past five years. This is overall all funds, and you see the balance at the end of the year this year was $11,311,000, which was up $862,000 from the previous year. And then these are the list of all the debt balances at the end of the year. We didn't have any new debt this year, so with the payments from last year, debt decreased during the year of $1,56,000, leaving us a balance at the end of the year of $6,897,000.
Can you go back to that slide for one moment, please?
The debt.
Okay, thank you very much.
Under the tax levy, you can see the tax levies for the past five years, as well as the tax collection percentages, which have stayed fairly the same since we did the tax and tag combination with the vehicles in a previous year. And the levy for this year was $3,513,000.
Is that collection, is that levy or collection?
That's the levy. And then of that, the total collection percentage was at 98.72. That's combined autos and real estate. 98.72 is a collection percentage, but that $3,513,000 is the levy.
So what you-
You collected about $3,540,000.
I don't have that in front of me, but I could get it.
On the, at the top of each bar, is the percent collected for that year?
Yes, and that's overall combined vehicles and real property.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I would like to say thank you to the board for allowing us to work on this audit again this year, and I'd like to thank Huck, Melissa, and everybody in the finance department for all their work. And I'd like to thank the department heads as well, because we had to use them a lot to get a lot of the statistical data for the CAFR report. And I'll leave it in case anybody has any questions, or they should look at another slide.
Any questions from Ms. Evans? We want to thank you for the time that you took to come here tonight to point this out to us, then. If there are any board members that want, but I know we have the full report, but this is a very help, easy-to-understand snapshot, if anybody wants that, can you-
Yeah, Cindy has.
Okay, excellent. We can always send that out to members of the board, or if anybody in the public wants it, you can delete it. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would like to comment and thank our manager, finance director, all the department heads, and everybody that works for the city for, this is a good report. I think the mayor will remember in 2009, we came on the board, you and I, and Mr. Bullock and Harris. Our fund balance was 16 or 18%. We got a letter from the league every year, warning us where we were, and we have not in several years now. We were doing budget amendments in October for a budget that was approved in June, and we were doing $100,000 budget amendments too, and we do none of that anymore, so I think a thanks goes out to everybody in our, watching the city.
Absolutely, thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Evans. All right, we move to item 4A, which is to consider accepting the annual finance report for fiscal year 2017, 2018, and we have attachment 4A that you can refer to, and of course, we just heard the report. And what is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion, that was Commissioner Bullock? Okay, any discussion? All in favor of Commissioner Bullock's motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Now we move forward to the public comment period of our agenda, and where citizens and residents may speak on the agenda and non-agenda items, and they are signed up on this form, I ask you to please refrain from any personal attacks in doing so. And I believe we have Don Jenkins first on the list. If you'll come forward and state your name and address and purpose for speaking for the public. Thank you very much, Mr. Jenkins.
Don Jenkins, excuse me, 105 Planters Place in Oxford. I'll be brief. And, but I would like to say what my conscience asks me and tells me to say. Decisions such as the one enabling post-service medical insurance for elected officials should be made from a perspective of integrity and common sense. They should not be made based on a threat of any kind of suit, particularly when a class action suit might follow that one, and that might have to be dealt with, and particularly when this city is very well insured for legal matters, and it would be a fairly simple thing, I'm sure. The people I talk with out here and in the streets are asking you guys to do, you folks to do the right thing, and to vote no on all post-retirement medical for elected officials, and then eliminate all the policy regarding that altogether. That's the request. Changing subjects slightly, and I said this last time, and I promise I will not make a career out of being here. I implore you one more time to settle differences and to settle issues in your sessions, in your committees, and not in the newspapers. When folks come and look at Grahamville County for purposes of relocating businesses and industries, they read the newspaper. And when they see these kinds of things, it simply discourages and dissuades people from picking our area. So it's a serious threat to economic development. Do your job, folks, fix it here, fix it in your committees. Changing the subjects one more time. Last time again, I talked about the importance of trust. Where there's high trust, there's fast speed and low cost. Conversely, where there's low trust, there's slow speed and high cost. It's a very practical matter. The first imperative of any leader, whether you're leading organizations or leading people, is to inspire trust. None other. There's no more important imperative as a leader than to inspire trust, and I urge you to consider this and and do what you can to build trust in an organization that obviously, all the things we see, the apparent things, or as it are called. And finally, a request from your constituents, and they're twofold. And one of those, the first of those is if you vote tonight, their request is that you do that, Madam Mayor, by a show of hands, ostensibly to see who they're going to vote for and not vote for in the next election. The other request is, Gail, that, we can't hear very well. I offered Gail my hearing aids, but she decided she wouldn't do that. But please be cognizant that we're here to hear what you have to say. Thank you, folks, and good day.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jenkins. Next, I invite Joan Roberson to come forward and speak, and again, identify yourself and your address and your purpose.
My comments have already been addressed, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I regret, oh, that was George, because you came up, Mr. Foster. I couldn't read your writing. Please come forward, identify yourself and-
I'm working very well.
And your name and your purpose.
My name is George Foster. I live at 313 Cherry Street, and of course, I want to talk about insurance for public officials that are no longer public officials. Sometime in the past, I guess this was considered a good idea. Now suddenly, it may not be looking like such a good idea. And my understanding is that we are about to have a request from a former city official who disgraced himself by committing a heinous crime, and he wants to come in here and ask for his insurance to be paid. I think the mayor and I would agree that a request like that is chutzpah with a capital "ch"! And I implore all of you to look at this policy and realize that it was a bad idea when it was done. It's a bad idea now. And I think that I speak for many of us in this room, that the fact that there may be litigation is not, is not that important to many of us, because we really believe that not, not allowing such a policy to obtain is responsible government. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And with that, we will close. There is no one else signed up for public comment, and I think you can hear who feels how they do by what you applause. So we move forward to the item on the agenda in old business, which is item five, to consider the issue regarding insurance benefits for retired elected officials. So, for purposes of the group present on July 17th, 1989, the Board of Commissioners voted to provide health insurance to retired elected officials that had served 15 years and that had reached age 55 or older. This policy was amended on November 11th, 1997, that changed the age limit to 65. On January 10th, 2006, another change was made, this time to the number of years served, from 15 to 20. In November 2008, the policy was amended again to be discontinued for all current or future board members, with the exception of former Mayor Alie Ellington, who was at that time receiving the benefit, and Mayor Alvin Woodlock, who at that time was eligible. This policy, if passed, will then only benefit one current member of the board, Commissioner Woodlock, and one former Mayor Alie Ellington. Request has come from the board for continuation of the policy for the two individuals that are eligible, Commissioner Al Woodlock and former Mayor Alie Ellington, and you have a staff report, which essentially states the same. So at this time, staff has no recommendation on the policy. What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I understand that we have received a letter from the former Mayor Ellington requesting that his post-health insurance be reinstated. I move that the board instruct the city attorney to respond to that, and with a negative, that we no longer will do that, if he also seek recourse, so be it.
Okay. So for purposes of clarification, because the current policy is for two, is your motion very specifically for former Mayor Alie Ellington?
Well, I think it's, you know, one step at a time. Let's address that in a positive manner, and tell it in no way. And as far as the other person that's authorized for it, he's already indicated he doesn't want it and will not apply for it. So I think it would be in order to ask the board to rescind that policy, the latest policy that allowed post-health insurance for elected officials.
Okay, so are you making the two-
You can, you can combine them together.
In one motion?
But I would like-
That one, we direct the manager to respond to former Mayor Alie Ellington in the, or our attorney with a thank you but no?
Yes.
And at the same time, we rescind this policy henceforth?
Across the board.
Across the board?
Right.
Okay. Is there any discussion, and I just wanted to make sure I understood clearly, are any- Okay, I apologize for not speaking up. We have part A, which is to direct the city attorney to respond to former Mayor Alie Ellington in the negatives? No, we will not reinstate your insurance. And part B, that we rescind the policy altogether, so it is no longer on the books. So with that, any discussion from any members of the board?
Well, my discussion would be, why do we have to personally respond to former Mayor Ellington if we're going to, if the motion is to rescind the policy? Once we do that, then he knows he's not with us.
Because I think out of courtesy, when somebody submits a request, you respond.
Right.
Oh, I have, Ms. Attorney.
I think it may be a good idea just to put those in reverse order, to rescind the policy and then send the letter.
Okay. Did you all hear that?
No.
Okay. The attorney suggested that we just reverse them, state first that the board, the motion is that the board rescinds the existing policy, and then thereupon communicates that to former Mayor Alie Ellington.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay. Any further discussion by any members of the board? Mr. Manager.
Yes, I'm, I'm going to convey something that we received today in my office. First of all, the mayor pro tem is sick, so he could not attend this evening, and he wanted to convey that to the board and to the public. The city clerk spoke to him this afternoon and seemed pretty ill, so we're concerned about his health and welfare at the moment. But he did send my office a statement, a request that he would like to have read regarding this topic. Our response back to the mayor pro tem was that it's completely up to the board as far as a practice, it is up to the board to allow basically a board member who is not in attendance to have a statement read. That, that's completely up to you. So I have it, I'll be glad to read it, the board has to agree to do that.
What is the pleasure of the board?
At this point, I think it'd be appropriate to hear it.
Okay, do we have acquiescence?
It is, it's pertaining to the action we're discussing now.
Yes, yes.
I will do so, I will also let the audience know that we have ordered some new microphones. Hopefully, the audio will get a little better in here. I hope you approve of the lighting, we worked on that a little bit to improve the lighting in here, and next we'll be on the audio as soon as they arrive, but they have been ordered. All right, the statement is that I am of the opinion that we already have a policy in place. It is stated numerous times to let the manager do his job without interference. This is clearly a case of interference. Case in point, last year during the budget process, the funding of outside agencies was a big topic. It was declared numerous times that we should allow the manager to do his job and not get involved in his decisions. I feel that this is the same case, we already have a policy. Plain and simple, follow it if it is not amended. If we are voting on anything, it should be as to whether or not to amend the policy. I cannot remember the general statute by memory regarding the conviction of felonies while receiving city benefits. To me, this would exclude the individual regarding those benefits. This has turned into a case where it is clearly personal and an action that is not necessary- This has turned into a case where it is clearly personal and an action that is not necessarily needed. Although this is something that some might not necessarily agree with, it is something that was earned by the individual individuals. I am sure that there are numerous people who receive a pension or a supplement from a source. Imagine how you would feel if that was taken away from you because someone did not agree with you. That is something that you earned at the time, whether people liked it or not. I cannot say what my vote would be because I am not sure of the motion. However, I think that my stance is clear."
Okay. We have Mayor Pro Tem Harris's comments. Any further comments or discussion from any members of the board before we vote? All right. All in favor of Commissioners Strickland's motion, which is to rescind the current policy and henceforth make this not a benefit that anyone is eligible for? And all those in favor of that, if this policy passes, we will then inform former Mayor, Ali Ellington of that fact. Signal so by raising your right hand. And we have a unanimous vote all the way down the line, and that motion carries. The policy is henceforth rescinded. Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just for a point of clarification, I think that Commissioner Harris indicated that this, that the manager had some authority over this, and that's not the case. This is a board decision, same as the budget. Our manager prepares a budget, but the board approves the budget.
Excellent. And I would just like to make a comment that everybody knows this has been an arduous process. I appreciate my colleagues up here for the thought and consideration they gave to this. It is not always easy to hear commentary from the public. I appreciate the members of the public that took their time to understand the issue and comment. It is the best way that we can function as a community is to have public discourse. I greatly appreciate the thought that my colleagues here on the board put into this, and we greatly appreciate those of you that took time out of your lives to come to the third floor of City Hall. So with that, we will move forward to New Business, and that is, Item 6 is to consider adopting a resolution requesting the city clerk to investigate the sufficiency of annexation petition for the parcel of land adjacent to the Hardees property located on Industry Drive. James Mueller, Chairman of the Board of Lace Elastics, is petitioning the city for contiguous annexation of three or more plus or minus acres of land adjacent to the Hardees property located on Industry Drive. The purpose of requesting the annexation is to connect to the city's utilities for future development. The requested annexation is contiguous to the city limits. The proposed development is for a medical office. You have support information in Attachment 6, and staff recommends requesting the city clerk to investigate the sufficiency of petition for annexation. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion?
Motion by Commissioner Bridges. Any discussion?
Give everybody a chance to weigh, even do whatever.
We can do that. Anybody who wants to leave? Carry on. We think our meetings are very interesting, but-
To say the least.
There are those of us who would disagree.
Everyone is entitled to an opinion.
Where is this property?
This property is adjacent to the Hardees down on Lewis Street. Is Lewis Street correct?
Yes.
You know, I love you to death, but this is not the time for back and forth with the audience. So we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bridges. Any discussion? And actually, at this time, it is just to have the city clerk to investigate the sufficiency of annexation petition for this parcel of land. Any discussion? All in favor, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Item 7 is to consider calling for a public hearing at the March 12, 2019, regular board meeting regarding the amending of the B1 zoning ordinance. The public hearing is to allow citizen input on amending a zoning ordinance to include the definition of a craft distillery and amending the table of permitted uses to allow a craft distillery in the B1 zoning district. The ordinance amendment would allow a small distillery production of less than 25,000 gallons a year in the B1 zoning district. The current zoning ordinance allows distilleries in the I-1, I-2, and I-3, these are all industrial rather than business zoning districts, and the B3 zoning district. In the attached documents, which is in Attachment 7, you'll see where distilleries are located in the downtown business district of several small towns and larger in North Carolina. And all that information is in Attachment 7, and the recommendation is that staff recommend calling for a public hearing at the March regular board meeting. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Oh, that was the motion by Commissioners Woodliffe and Kern concomitantly. Any discussion? All in favor, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Item 8, consider calling for a public hearing in the March regular board meeting, that is also March 12, 2019, for a rezoning request from Eddie Cottle to rezone eight acres of land from residential agricultural to B2, which is highway business. Mr. Cottle rezoned the front portion of the property approximately a year ago and has since recombined an additional eight acres. The purpose of the rezoning is for the entire property to have the highway business zoning and to make it more marketable for future development. You colleagues have support materials in Attachment 8. Staff recommends calling for a public hearing. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioners Bullock, Fields, and I think possibly Kern. Any discussion on the motion? And I just have a question, which is, well, I'll ask that after we vote. All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. And Ms. Hart, if I can just ask you, whatever maps we make available, if there's anybody in the public that wants to see the maps, if they can be a little bit clearer than the ones that are in our packet for people to see the identifying markers on them. Item 9, consider adopting a demolition ordinance for the property located at 311 McClanahan Street. This property is being listed as owned by Fred and Virginia Jacobs of 928 Nicholas Street, Henderson, North Carolina, 27536. The property has been abandoned and in poor condition. The structure is adjacent to the Mary Potter School campus. The water bill account has not been active since August of 2007, and taxes for this property have not been paid since 2009. $4,022.88 is owed for back taxes and $1,243 for liens filed by the city. There is evidence that the structure is being occupied unlawfully, and you have support information in Attachment 9. The recommendation is that we adopt the demolition ordinance. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Strickland. Any discussion?
Yeah, I was just wondering why owners who only live seven miles away aren't talking, being talked to about this tax, tax is owed and also the water bill, I mean, they're seven miles away.
We have owners right here, that's the amount of way, probably the same, but it's not standing that this particular owner, this older family, if they may have been deceased at this time.
But I guess the liens by the city are evidence of an attempt to communicate. Would that be true?
That is true, and so whoever owns this property in the future, they have the right to.
With that, any further discussion on the demolition?
This is 311 East McClanahan Street.
Well, thank you very much. 311 East McClanahan Street. Any further discussion on the motion, Commissioner Strickland was correct?
Yes.
All in favor of the motion for the demolition ordinance, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Item 10, consider adopting a demolition ordinance for the property located at 100 King Street. The property owned by Martha Cooley and William Cooley was damaged during Hurricane Michael. The structure is a total loss, and the land is valued at $11,000. By adopting the demolition ordinance, the city will move forward if the owner chooses not to have the structure or tree removed, and you have support information, including pictures, in Attachment 10. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Fields to adopt the demolition ordinance. Any discussion?
I just have a question.
Yes, sir.
Are these recent pictures?
They are recent pictures, and actually, it's been demolished, the contractor that was doing the work here with the property, so the owner's got to do it. But yes, they are recent pictures that-
Right. It just looks dangerous. You know, I'm looking at a huge tree in the middle of this home, and I'm looking at a wall that looks like it's about to fall because of this huge tree.
It was worse than that before.
I just hope no key gets around before we get in.
They're about finished.
They're about finished, so I think you don't, your worries are done. Any further discussion? All in favor of this demolition ordinance, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? The motion carries. And I would just like to say thank you to Ms. Hart for providing, the pictures in your staff report are extremely helpful. We appreciate that, and I think anybody who's been watching things going on about town, Cheryl and her colleague, Antoine Rice, Ms. Hart and Antoine Rice have been doing a great job working to clean up neglected areas and beautify the city, and I want to thank you for that. Yes, please.
There were long periods of time of passing that statues were out there. It's sort of hard to why so long.
Mr. Foster, we have a public comment period that is established at the beginning of the meeting for a purpose, and so you should use the public comment period. Thank you. Item 12, award the bid for the wastewater treatment plant West Sludge Lagoon rehabilitation. The engineering department accepted informal bids for the wastewater treatment-
Wait a minute. You skipped 11.
Oh, I skipped 11. I apologize. See what happens when the public speaks up inadvertently. Please forgive me. Let's go back to item 11. Consider approving a subdivision plat, which includes subdividing a three-acre tract of land from an existing 10-acre tract. The remaining acreage will create a 7.11-acre tract of land. The zoning of the property, which is located off of Tobacco Road, is I-3, which is heavy industrial. The requested subdivision meets the minimum requirements of the ordinance. This is the property formerly known as Master Woodcraft, consisting of 10.11 acres. With subdividing the property, each property will have road frontage and a building on it, and you have support information, including a map, in Attachment 11. The recommendation is, from staff and the planning board, both recommend approving the subdivision request. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Woodliffe. Any discussion?
I have a question, someone. Is that a private road, Tobacco Road, is that a city road?
Tobacco Road appears on that map, so I think that's a city road.
It is.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Cheryl, it's got an SR number, right? So it's a state road. It's recognized by the state as a secondary road, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Did we already have the motion?
Uh-uh.
Yes.
Kern. George, did you shake up the J? We'll shake up a-
Got it. Thank you. No further discussion. All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now we move to item 12. To award the bid for the wastewater treatment plant West Sludge Lagoon Rehabilitation, we have accepted informal bids for the wastewater treatment plant West Sludge Lagoon Rehabilitation and the Engineering Department on January 25, 2019. The bids came in within the available construction budget of $435,000. This project will install concrete on the sides and bottom of one lagoon at the wastewater treatment plant to prevent the existing concrete from sliding into the lagoon and stop the erosion of the basement. This work is part of the 10-year capital improvement plan, and the bridge range from $423,300 to $488,777, and you have that information in Attachment 12. The recommendation from staff is that the board award the contract to the low bidder, who is H.G. Reynolds, in the amount of $423,300, and authorize an additional $11,700 or approximately 3% for contingencies for a total of $435,000, which has already been budgeted for this project. No, I think I saw a hand from-
I was just going to put a motion to approve.
Public Works Chair, Ron Bullock, to approve it. Any discussion?
One quick comment, that, as you see, that does bring us back up to a budgeted amount.
Correct. Thank you very much. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. And what a wonderful thing it is, and thank you for, to the Board of Commissioners, for the work that they've done with Commissioner Bullock's Public Works Committee and the Engineering Department to do a project that is so important for the city. Item 13, reappoint James Crawford to the zoning board of adjustment. Mr. Crawford's term will expire February 29, 2019. He has requested to remain on the board, and there have been no other applicants, and you have his application in Attachment 13. Staff recommend appointing or reappointing Mr. Crawford to the zoning board. What is the pleasure of the board?
As a member of that board, I like to make a motion if we reappoint.
Okay. Commissioner Woodliffe has made the motion. Any discussion? All in favor, signal so by saying, yes, sir?
We don't have the 29, because-
28.
Sorry. Well done.
Can we amend that to the 28?
Yes.
Me and my motion, the 28 and 29.
Oh, I love a sharp commission.
I'm so sorry.
Okay. All in favor, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries. And the next item, which is Item 14, consider appointing Jacqueline Thomas to the Historic Preservation Commission. Ms. Thomas has submitted an application to fill the remainder of Mr. Mark Brooks, who moved from town, and his term will expire on June 29, 2019. And we do have it June 29. You have support information in your Attachment 14, in the form of her application, and staff recommends appointing Ms. Thomas to the Historic Preservation Commission. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Bullock. Any discussion? All in favor, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. We move on to the consent agenda. Items 15 are accepting the January finance report by Finance Director Ung, and approving Item 16 is to approve the January 7th and January 15th, 2019 meeting minutes. Pleasure, what is?
Motion to accept the consent.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Kern. Any discussion? All in favor, signal so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? That motion carries unanimously. And before we adjourn, any comments from colleagues? Commissioner Woodliffe?
Mr. Manager, Mr. Attorney, what's the situation on the armory?
The survey of the armory has not been completed.
Has not?
Has not. Now, the survey of the lot that we're giving them has been done. The survey of the armory has not been completed.
How long have we been waiting for this survey?
Probably at least a month.
Probably six.
Okay, well.
Almost six.
It hadn't, I hadn't been told it's been done. I can check right now, but I haven't, I don't have a copy of it.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Bullock?
No.
Commissioner Fields?
I'm going home tonight feeling better than I came in, and I thank my colleagues for that, and I'm hoping that somehow tonight the board has increased the perception of our citizens of this board. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Bridges?
No.
Okay. And Commissioner Kern?
No.
Commissioner Strickland?
On the 5 o'clock news, they, I think it was today, they gave a report on water systems throughout the state. I think if I remember correctly-
And I think if I remember correctly, we were ranked number 17th as the worst.
Okay, I think the manager has a comment.
I would be glad to provide a little bit of clarification on that. That report was dealing with distribution systems. I want everyone to know and understand that Oxford has a separate distribution system for its water than does Henderson. The source of the water is the same, but the distribution system, which is what is being measured and reported in those reports, are completely separate. Our water is good, we do the same reports that are required by environmental management in the state of North Carolina, and I believe in the past year, we had one instance of elevated trihalomethanes, of which we, of course, then reported not only to the state but to the public. So we're in good standing, we're not listed there. So it's the distribution system that is involved in those reports, and ours is separate.
But thank you for bringing it up, that's an opportunity to clarify.
I understood, I knew what he said, that we have our own, but I was just wondering, you know, we've had, we really had some problems with the Henderson Distribution Center for a long time, and I was just wondering if we need to be concerned.
Good. And I think, and I think it's another opportunity to give a shout out to our city engineer and her staff. I believe she was part of a presentation earlier today from people across the state talking about the work that's going on here in Oxford. And for those of you in the audience that are not aware, we have approximately $43 million in grants and low-interest loans to invest to further improve our distribution system for both water and sewers. So thank you, Commissioner, for bringing that up, and thank you, Mr. Manager, for clarifying that.
I'd also just add one more point, that what I mean testing of the distribution system, that means that there are selected points all across Oxford's distribution system where we test for byproducts of the chemical treatment of our water supply system. So essentially, what is taking place is that when the water comes out of the treatment facility, there are tests taken there as far as the purity of the water, and once it enters into a distribution system, there are a number of factors that determine your results. A large part of it is your retention, and how long it is retained in those lines, how many dead-end lines that you have, temperature of the water, typically you have elevated byproducts if you don't do flushing and have a loop system and a number of other things in warm weather. So we spend a lot of time being very cognizant of our system and the hydrodynamics of our system. That's why you see the city of Oxford performing flushing periodically of different locations and locales. We try to keep on top of it to the very best of our ability, because we prefer not to be on that list.
Thank you very much. Mr. Attorney, anything to add tonight?
No, ma'am.
Okay, and then lastly, I have one thing, which is in my agenda packet. I received from the North Carolina Main Street Rural Planning Center, a printout of the 2018 program assessment, and it says, based on the information reviewed, we are recommending to the National Main Street Center that Downtown Oxford Economic Development Commission be a 2019 accredited Main Street program. Accredited communities will be recognized at the Main Street Now Conference in March. We do encourage Downtown Economic, Oxford Economic Development to continue working towards meeting the minimum, if not exceeding the minimum requirements. And many of you probably know that Mary Yount, he is our staff person that works the hardest on this, and the Downtown Economic Development Commission works with her. Every item was exceeded, and she did an outstanding job, and I think we owe her and the DOE DC a round of applause. And with that, Thursday reminders, Thursday, February 21st, Graham County Board Retreat. If any of our board members plan to attend, please let Cindy know. Friday, March 1st, 8:30 to 5:00. Our board will be having its retreat at Minoalaw City, and then Saturday, March 2nd, 9:00 to 12:30 p.m., we will be continuing that retreat. So with that, what's the pleasure of the board?
Adjourn, yeah.
Okay, motion to adjourn, and was that a permission turn? It was you, Frank?
No.